Welcome along to the June 11 Town Council, Washington, Virginia. Call order. I'm going to make two, if not three, depending on how you can, suggested addition to the agenda. Number one is on the agenda, but it was not on the original agenda. And that is a proposal from various entities in McCounty to get the support of the town for the Dark Sky project right into the park across the street. So we'll explain what that's all about. Secondly, not on this sheet. I think it would be beneficial, given some things that are happening, and I'll get into them as we address these issues, assuming all I'm willing to address them. One has to do with subject to boundary adjustments, the process by which one does that and issues associated with it. And then there is a request for a stub-street change here in town, which the council has copies of. It's not coming in time for, we're not actually deciding, let me be clear, we're not deciding anything tonight on any of these subjects I'm talking about, except for the Dark Sky is a letter. But I thought it'd be useful if John would educate the council and the public with reference to these two subjects, one the boundary adjustments and one stub-street. So if it's okay with my colleagues, we're going to have those in the agenda. Okay, minutes from January 8. Questions, suggestions?
I just had a couple of corrections and typos and stuff. Will I make a motion to approve them, with those changes?
On favor? All right. Next treasurer's report, Mr. Goble.
Total consolidated assets of the town of Washington as of 5/31/2018 was $459,644.28. During that same period, total consolidated assets of Washington Water Works was $23,015.48. And the wastewater total consolidated assets was a whopping $102.27. May usage, we pumped 1,348,000 gallons, backwash 21,000. We missed 1,327,000 billable gallons. And we billed 1,281,665 gallons. We have non-metered sales of 33,000 gallons, leaving us a total... That's kind of funny. Oh, yeah. We had gallons billed, 1,281,665. We had non-metered sales of 33,000... Well, that's not right. I'll have to figure that out in a minute. It doesn't look right. I've did it three times today and it's still not right. I'll come back to that in a minute. Meals and Lodges, total income for the town, we had a total income of $24,173.08. We had total income for the Washington Water Works in May of $7,099.68. And our wastewater income in May was $10,729.60. Bills to be, additional bills to be paid and the bills to be paid. Nothing really unusual on there. You'll see in the general account, there's a 5,000 account promotion. That's the in-stock money that was approved last month, so that's being sent out. And then we did have a country water systems in the Water Works account, $11,005.1972. A lot of that was the big leak down key months. So other than that, there's really nothing unusual in there this month.
Did the cessation of water for those few days have a significant impact on our building?
We were, um, we lost so much water in the lead, whatever.
That we lost?
Whatever water we lost, we lost so much water with the lead that what we saved by people were getting that off the piece of land.
Yeah, but I guess I'm not worried so much about the water, but the revenue. So our revenue will be down, was down for this month because we weren't able to build...
That should show up in these figures.
But you're still building. You're getting water off for some dollars.
Well, I guess the water was still on, it just wasn't drinkable.
Yeah, it was only off for like six hours. So that wasn't... The quarter day was in and closed.
That's pretty marginal.
So all the A and Bs were, you know...
I have a question on the Meals and Lodges tax. On the Meals and Lodges tax, are Airbnb's included in the tax?
They are.
The ones that have, aren't, have, admitted that they're doing it. But I now think we know who they are, so I... The legitimate Airbnb's that work through Airbnb and then Airbnb sent us...
No, we don't get anything from Airbnb at this time. As far as I know, everybody that's operating as Airbnb are paying them.
Any other questions? If not, a motion to approve? Second.
I'll second.
On favor? Planning Commission?
I was standing on the approval of the treasurer's report since there is a check to in-stock.
Good point.
The planning commission did not meet, so we do not have a report.
The ARP does not meet this month as well, I think. Okay, before getting to the agenda, a reminder, tomorrow is the cutoff date for people finally to run for mayor, treasurer, town council. High PM tomorrow. I think most people have already done, but if anybody hasn't or if you're still thinking of running and haven't said so, please make sure you file it by 5 tomorrow. One can still run, just to remind, it's a reigning candidate up to the election. So if anybody else decides they want to run, there's that opportunity for them. Okay, old business, approval of the FY 18-19 budget. We've gone through the normal process of having work sessions, public sessions, public hearing last month, or can we approve it last month after the public hearing and then later realize we had to wait a month before we could prove it, so we're going to approve it again, presumably. Any questions from council members with regard to the budget? And if not, do we have a motion to approve? All right, I'll second it. Roll call, Brad?
Yes.
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 Oh, yes.
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 Let me get a comment on the bills we paid. That number on treated but not yet billed, that should not be there, 1248665. The $12,335 should be in that space, so just to ignore the treated but not yet billed number, move the $12,335 up.
So we can sort of change it?
Yeah. The bottom number went right.
A comment, just as a point of emphasis, on the budget, in case people are watching this video and have not been present at other meetings, this budget has gone through a three-month process that has taken a lot of time. It's been open, it's been public hearings, et cetera. So it looks as if we just casually approved this budget. There have been many, many discussions with regard to... Task Force Committee meeting update. Mr. Cattell?
There have been meetings so far, at least three of the five task forces. And I don't know if members of the different task forces, their spokespeople are here. I can speak on behalf of the House of Task Forces. We had a good meeting on May 23rd and had an evaluation of where we are and some discussion about future goals. We will have, the Housing Task Force will have its next meeting on Wednesday, June 13. The Business Development will have met last week. They had a good discussion. They will go forward with their next meeting on the 25th of June. Marian, do you have anything for the tourism?
Drew's right here.
We've met twice, had some good discussions concentrating on marketing, particularly branding. And I think we're hoping to work with the Business Development Task Forces to build potentially that survey idea that was discussed, just to get more information from business owners in the town about tourism and what's good support.
And do you know when your next meeting is?
Our next meeting is tentatively planned for July 17, I believe, about getting approval from...
Okay. And then, poor Brad, you have two task forces that you've been moving on. Do you have, have you had a chance to set up an initial meeting?
No, I haven't. I haven't. I was hoping to have infrastructure last week and when I was out of business and travel, so I wanted to try and set that away. Had some individual conversations, some of them prompted by the leak on people inhabiting. So we are starting to happy to start taking updates.
Mr. Marian?
Any questions? Okay, new business. You have in front of you a letter, frankly written by Rick Koller, who has been the leading activist, if you will, on Dark Sky's movement in this county, along with lots of other people. Efforts are underway to get the park across the street, the county park, which is not part of the town, to become officially designated as part of the Dark Sky's cases, I guess. They have asked for our support, involves no money on our part, no responsibility, but it's expressed our support with our LEP and these other groups that designating the county park as a Dark Sky's facility would be good for the town, implicitly for the county, but this is really a letter of town's support. And I think it's very, I happen to believe in the Dark Sky's movement, and I think it's a terrific thing to be done. I hope the town wants to support it. It's pretty straightforward.
That's what we've been looking for, a letter for this.
Yeah, you got it there.
Well, I got a letter for this.
This is a, this is a...
Is this the letter you want to send then?
Yeah, this was distributed to someone. This is a draft of a letter from me to the International Dark Sky Association in Tucson, It is so, I confess, it's so well-written and so substantive, it wasn't done by me, it was actually written by Rick, but it's got my name on it, just for candor and transparency, openness in government, et cetera.
Okay, that was my question then.
Yeah, that's it. But it involves, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but it involves nothing in terms of the town financial support or accountability or whatever, it's not even our property. But I think it's a good, an idea. Do I have a motion to approve?
No.
They need it, you know, in the next week or 10 days or so. What about it?
Just sending the letter.
Yeah, it's just a letter. It's, you know, they're getting a number of groups and associations and whatever in the county to support the notion.
After we make the motion, I have one question, but I'll go ahead and move for the letter.
All right, so we have a motion, is there a second? Yeah.
And the question I had before it comes to vote is, I think, I know the answer to this, but I just want to make sure that the town right now, all of its pole lights are shielded, correct?
The town is, is not, is not compliant, but we are consistent with the Dark Skies ever.
My bad, they're shielded, but they're not downed, correct?
Okay. And I actually, the frightening thing is, I know what that means.
Okay, here we go. A vote. I think we have a first and second. On favor?
All right.
Okay. Now let's get to something more substantive. As everybody knows, the town has, in one way or another, thought about, talked about, people have talked about the notion of someday expanding the town through boundary adjustment process. It's specifically highlighted in the new comprehensive plan. It may have been in the old as well, I don't recall, but specifically highlighted in the current comp plan. It is relevant to the extent that one wants to see growth in or around the town. And there's some land in the town, but there's also land that is adjacent to the town. And as far as these people sort of talk about off and on, there's never been a real discussion that I'm aware of, or a substantive discussion that I'm aware of, that any property owners, other than maybe someone say, yeah, I'd be interested. The fire department has expressed an interest in being brought into the town because they have specific issues of some consequence and would like access to our wastewater system. So something's been percolating, and I thought it would be useful, because like all things, it's somewhat more complicated than we all kind of tend to assume, to ask John Bennett to kind of educate us as to what are the issues, what's the process, what do we go through. We're not addressing here, to be clear, any specific proposal to do property X or property Y, we're not at that point, but it's like, well, if we want to move to that point, we want to talk to the owners of those properties, property, et cetera. We don't know what we're getting into. So, John, you want to educate us?
This, sir, do you know best here? It's a, boundary adjustment is a consensual procedure between two adjoining governments to adjust the boundary line between the two jurisdictions. It's not an annexation. An annexation is a hostile proceeding in court, and court rules on it one way or the other, that one government doesn't have consent to it. So what's always been discussed, from the town, to my knowledge, is doing something with the counties that the county agrees to, the county agrees to. Now, I believe under these circumstances, the sort of the mission leading party would be the town to tell the county what it would be interested in bringing into the town legal boundaries. And that's, essentially, the town has to formulate a proposal that goes to the county, but the county sort of looks at it and in a general way doesn't object to it and is willing to move forward on that basis. And once you get to that point, the town, I think in this case, would work out an agreement, be presented to the county, it would actually be very specific. And that is where things get more complicated than might have otherwise realized. I was the last part-time county attorney at Culpeper, and there, now we're talking about this, I started thinking back on it. I started working on their boundary line just 15 years ago, 20 years ago, and it was completed about four or five years ago, so it was 15-year process. The governments right away had a concept that was agreeable, both governments generally. But then working out all the details with property owners, stakeholders, provision of services, where the sewer lines go, the water lines, because all those affect the values of property and what can be developed and what can't be developed, became very, every detail was important. If you ever want to see a complicated document, go online, look at the final agreement between town, county, and Culpeper, but it wouldn't be that complicated in the town of Washington, but yet all the details related to the adjustment really need to be addressed in that agreement. For example, if the sewer line were extended to the fire company, goes to another piece of property, as we discussed when the sewer system was being built, that property owner may acquire certain rights that the town would have difficulty restricting in access to sewer capacity and sewer line, whether they're in the sewer district or not. So that becomes a complicated issue. Where do the sewer lines go, over whose property, water lines, the same thing. And then there's the question of zoning. The general principle is, when there's a boundary line adjustment, the new property that comes into the jurisdiction comes in at the lowest zoning classification that jurisdiction, in this case the town, would have. So it would come in at the lowest classification, five acre zoning, rural residential in other regions, but some of these parcels wouldn't be five acres, and you'd have a question of how do you address that? Well, some of the potential property is already zoned commercial. It's got old zoning that is general commercial, that by right, any number of uses that might be objectionable to town could be built on that. So if that were, if those parcels were under discussion to come into the town, that's probably a very specific negotiation, that property owner doesn't want to give up its rights to some commercial zoning, but yet really can't develop the property unless they get sewer from the town. So there's some horse trading there, limit the number of uses by negotiation. And also, there's a principle that property ownership, you can't require the payment for off-site improvements, turning lanes, things like that. It may be necessary, it's really, it's part of the development. Now, governments require it all the time, but push comes to shove, of course, it's said that you can't require. And that is a big expense that falls back on the taxpayers because this property was already given the zoning. No jurisdiction I'm aware of does it that way anymore. If you want to do something and you need rezoning, the government wants to see a proper, generalized development plan that becomes legally enforceable, shows what's going to be built, general location, all of that's subject to final engineering. And to address the building absorption, all the costs that are related to the off-site improvements, so none of those fall back on the government, in this case the citizens. So that, that can become a very detailed and complex negotiation because of some back and forth, but, but my experience over Culpeper is that, you know, both parties want it to happen, so at the end of the day, something's going to be worked out. That happened over Culpeper with all the properties involved, the exception is one, and that was the Co-op, which is sort of a fort unto itself, it was not annexed. The farmers at Co-op stood up and said, we do not, under any circumstances, want to be part of the town. And if you look at, they finally agree that they're not. But the towns all the way around, you know, 10-acre parcel, it's right sitting there. But everybody else, there was this negotiation, and at the end of the day, the stakeholders, the property owners, supported it. Both governments supported it, and, but it took a long time to work out all the details in a manner that was satisfactory to all the parties involved. So you get to the stage that you have this detailed agreement that's been finalized and that, you know, general readings, review sort of way is acceptable to both governments. So at that point, it's much like the zoning case, you move on to advertising and hold a public hearing and receive comments and adjusting the agreement as may be indicated or appropriate from the comments that are received at the county, both the county and the town, public hearing on the question, questions involved. Once that is done, petition is filed, a court petition is filed by the two governments involved, and it goes before the circuit court. For this particular type of proceeding, it does not have to be approved by the Commission on Local Governments, which is a big advantage because that becomes very complicated.
Doesn't have to be approved by the citizens.
Does not. And that's, that's a big advantage because that's a complicated process in and of itself. At one time, there was that requirement, that had been eliminated a long time, a while back then. It's just a one judge on the circuit court, it's not a three-judge panel. And the judge, the jurisdiction for the court to review the agreement, it has to be in proper form, petition has to be filed properly, and the advertising, the public hearing have to be held strict and formal with the requirements of the statutes, so in notice to all the affected parties. But beyond that, case law says that the court really doesn't necessarily have jurisdiction to get into the particulars of the arena. However, it was my experience that the court asked a lot of questions about a lot of, a lot of different topics, ones that could have been agreed, so, before making any rule on anything. So if the court then approves it, the survey has to be submitted along with the petition. The final survey is prepared, the agreement, document evidencing the boundary line adjustment between jurisdictions that are recorded in the courthouse, I believe. And that's it.
John, in terms of sequencing, it's maybe a minor point, maybe not, would the town go first to approve something, if we're going to, and then the county follows? If the county goes first and then the town?
Yes.
Not going to be done the same day?
The town generally does everything first because they're the moving party. They really, in this case, in this case, the town is interested in expanding its boundaries, and the county doesn't object, but the county's not pressing the town to give away its property.
It sounds like what you're saying, that, well, two questions. Was, the town wants to do this, there needs to be a very comprehensive gathering of information, presenting it very organized. It's not just an arbitrary, open one of the boundary lines, and then start the ping pong back and forth. It sounds like you really want to do a vast amount of work to identify, like you say, zoning, services, infrastructure, all the various things, so that when the town's designing to the county, they have a pretty detailed understanding of what, you know, we're offering, what we want to do, and just to sort of expedite the process. Another question would be, if the town wants to do boundaries in two different locations, would you want to do it at the same time as part of ours, or would you say, "Okay, we're going to do this on the east side of town, or we're going to do this later on the west side of town?"
You have the option of doing it any way you want to, there's no restriction as to the time period between filing for boundary lines, like sometimes. So you could do one, one month, and another six months later.
Could you get approval and not, could there be an approval and then a delay before, between when it's approved and then the actual boundary change? Or is the approval, does that actually go into effect immediately? What I'm thinking is, you say, "Well, we know we want to expand this part of town. You want to go through that process, but maybe not actually, you know, affect the actual change, because there's no development, there's no, you know, someone's not coming forward to say, 'Hey, I want to bring this property in,' or 'I want to make this, build these homes up'," or anything.
I think generally speaking, an ordinance cannot be given effect sometime in the future. And I think that that wouldn't be any different for this type of court proceeding, court's looking at it, "You're going to do it, you know, do it." But that is a big issue. It used to be the Commission on Local Governments, very quite different, this question about what services will the town provide, very broad idea, but they're out of the picture now. However, the property owners have, of course, a very strong interest in that, so that's a question that has to be dealt with. So everybody, you know, everybody's on board.
That's what I'm saying. It sounds like you sort of want to do a fair amount of this background work with, you know, individual property owners, to create this document that you then take to the county, so they can sort of see that probably you've already done, and to this point, everyone's in agreement, consensus.
I think the approach might be that the town would examine the question and see what the interests of the town would be in proceeding, and then engage the stakeholders, property owners, in the dialogue. And at the end of the day, come up with an agreement that pretty much lays everything out, but you haven't surveyed, engineered sewer lines and all that sort of stuff, and you don't have the specific description that you need for the final document that goes to the court, who would spend money to do that. But it deals with all, essentially, with all the issues that are going to be in the final agreement.
Brad's question, Brad's question's really good, because to be so simple about it, a person owns the property, and the person is interested in having it included in the town, for what purpose that's. There's two directions. One is, and in most cases, the property owner himself, herself, is not looking to develop something, be the developer. So a developer in this sense, I don't want to count as not looking to pay the owner. But if someone says, "We want to put up 10 units for senior citizen housing," or something, the property owner is going to, may want to know whether that third party really is prepared to do something. And the town and the, I'd lay the county, but the town and the property owner, it's a three-piece puzzle. It's not just the town, it's not just the town and the property owner.
Yeah, it's a lag. But I think what you would be envisioning is, property owners, so someone's developers don't come in and want to develop this property, and right now, I'm with the county. Now, this all goes through, and now I'm in the town, but the development falls apart, maybe I don't really want to be in the town. Is that what you're...
It's really, it's simple if the property owner wants to develop it himself. It's a, "I'm going to do X. Can I do what, what do you bring in, what are the rules, et cetera, et cetera."
With the flip side of the...
Third party.
Yeah.
Is there ever any kind of surety that's done, from your experience, in this kind of scenario that Brad's brought up?
Yes. It's sort of like the way most zoning cases are addressed now, that essentially, the zoning and how it would come into the town, and how it could be developed and negotiated as part of the agreement. So let's say that on this parcel, the owner envisioned 15 units for people over, older people. You could have a generalized development plan and text that is part of the agreement, that when it comes in, it would be zoned, the town would zone it to that classification it's free upon, but those restrictions that are on the property that say, "No, I don't want to do it."
What I was saying here is, speaking specifically to someone wants to be part of this, and a developer backs out, is there any surety, or is there any kind of deposit or some kind of way that you can ensure that the developer provides commitment and doesn't back out?
I haven't seen you get to that level of specificity, but I think an approach that may work is that essentially, you proceed to open the mouth to not only the zoning and the development concept, but actually the site plan, that when, and having the agreement that when it comes into the town, that would be the zoning, site plan will be adopted, which then has to be bonded.
And is the financial burden on the part of the town, or on the part of the person or property owner who wants to be annexed?
Adjusted.
Adjusted.
Not annexed.
Sounds like a very costly, how much did Culpeper have to pay, for example, for 15 years of legal fees?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
All that strain.
Didn't have it. When you say the last year was hefty enough.
Well, other than legal fees, which could be substantial, why would the town... There was something you said earlier, I got a little confused with it. Why would the town necessarily have to pay for anything? Whereas if somebody wants to develop the property, and put whatever on it, and it's acceptable to the community, and it's appropriate of them. It's then the responsibility of the developer and/or the property owner to figure out how to finance it and do whatever. And as part of it, if they, of course, they're going to waste water and water, that we get paid for whatever the cost of extending that, those services.
Yeah. I was speaking of the situation where the government, town council, wishes to make sort of a wholesale, let's say, boundary adjustment on one side of town or whatever, and have it be the expense on the town, generally speaking. Although part of the negotiation for zoning could be the property owner kicking some money for various impact fees, including the costs of going through this agreement. However, there's another procedure where private property owners can petition for a boundary line adjustment, in which case, it's all very expensive.
So what if there's a lot of property between that property owner who's petitioning, three houses between?
It's got, the boundary line adjustment has to have...
Has to what?
Have to have...
Three houses between?
So you've mentioned on several occasions the process to Culpeper. Just in rough terms, how many properties were, were you, were involved in the boundary line adjustment for Culpeper?
You know, it involved the creation of office parks, high-density residential, you know, there was thousands of residential units and...
So it was a scale much more significant?
Well, well over millions of square feet in warehouse owner space, the way I feel about it.
So you had not only a huge amount of space that was being developed, you also had a huge amount of land, did you have a lot of different parties involved who were neighbors, who owned the land, or what have you, in the process of Culpeper?
The big, the development parcels were generally owned in larger chunks, which in a sense simplified negotiations, because you weren't negotiating three property owners, you were negotiating with one owner who owned 22 acres.
But then you had a number of these different, large...
And it happened all around town, places different on one side, it was expanded on the north side, it was expanded on the south side, it was expanded on the east side, it was not expanded on the west side.
So it was a significant, so the scale is a much more significant scale?
It was contemplated that this would carry the town for at least 20 or 25 years, for expansion and providing a place where the high-density development could take place, relieve development pressures in the county.
May I open your thoughts?
Have you ever done anything on a smaller scale, like what we're talking about?
I think I did one for jurisdiction at town in Prince William County.
And the expenses, and how long did it take?
It was real simple, it was a county at this one parcel, and it was really small.
We had, the town had one also.
We had around here, we had one, and we knew it was my property, that little black mark over there. We adjusted the town's boundary on, the orange line is the old town, and that little black triangle is the Smoot property, my property, and the batch of the property. All three of those properties had portions of our properties in the county and in the town. Mr. Smoot wanted to build a house on the back of his property, and so he petitioned to have boundary lines changed, just to kind of straighten that out, so that we were all in town, and none of those parts were in town. It was a pretty simple thing, it was three property owners agreeing, and some new plans for...
It would be nice to have a, I'm sorry, it would be nice to have a parallel, find one or two experiences from communities that are parallel in size to Washington, that are also more rural than you would find in, say, Prince William County or something like that.
It really, a boundary line adjustment really becomes, as I say, sort of site-specific. Depends on the parcels involved, and what's contemplated by the government, what's contemplated by the owners, and how close they are initially, and those sort of things.
John, to you. Let's skip over the merits of this, if you will. But if you've got a piece of land, let's say in downtown Washington, and we have residential services and what have you, and then there's rural residential that comes around the circumference. And if you then were to go beyond that, and want to put residential in, that would be zoned residential, some form of residential. Like, you'd be going sort of from residential to rural residential, and then back to residential, if you understand, if you, is that, forget the merits of some project, but is that a doable thing, or do you have to have, from a zoning standpoint, as you sort of spread out and become less developable? Well, anyway, do you get what I mean?
Yes. In that, you apply the general principles relating to zoning, is it spot zoning? Is it part of a comprehensive plan that has a rational basis to it? If so, it can be done. And there's, and, you know, zoning districts jump over each other for specific reasons. If there are specific reasons that make sense, then yes.
You'll, the three properties that are on one end have different zoning than the rural residential around it. So you do have some of that already happening. That's just one that comes immediately to mind.
You know, I don't mean to be all gloom and gloom here about the fact that it is that, in this situation, you know, members of the government would be negotiating with property owners, lawyers would, I think, essentially just be paper readers, they say, that it's not, would be other citizens under meeting.
Let's open this, this is not a public hearing, we're just having a conversation, we're not deciding anything. Can I really...
It's a little technical, but as I understand it, while any affected property owners would have pre-existing property rights that would have to be respected, they don't have a legal right to oppose or thwart, once the two governments reach an agreement. Is that correct?
The property owner cannot intervene...
They're not a proper party.
In the court proceeding.
Yeah. Beyond that, there's the political pressure, so that a property owner that was widely opposed to this could certainly try and lobby governments on both town and the board of supervisors and this council to oppose it during public hearings or anything else. But in terms of their legal rights, they're not proper parties to be, to object or defeat the will of the two municipalities.
And there are, you know, there are bases, bases by which property is downzoned by jurisdictions, and happens, you know, some frequency.
But their standing then would be that their pre-existing property rights had somehow been illegally or in some way that wasn't proper, according to the law, abused.
They don't vest in Virginia, you don't have any vesting until you get at least, at least, to sketch plan or your site plans to, at least.
And just another clarification, a little bit of research I've done for our kind of situation, speaking as a county knight, ceding all this valuable property to the town, would be the survey, most likely, would be the single largest cash outlay to the town where the county would have to come up with. Unless it's somehow agreeable to the party that are being absorbed, that they kick in some, but assuming you don't ask the property owners involved to contribute to the survey, either the town and/or the town and county would bear the cost of the survey.
Yes. The affected property owners, that's really something that's probably the negotiation with each one. But the town had a survey down on the boundaries 15, 20 years ago? Yeah, so that could be up there, you know. So if they had it lifted, it's been done, it's sort of...
Apparently, there's some confusion about specific pieces of that survey, as to where they actually lay on the ground. I mean, I think the plat, there's no dispute about that, but there appears to be some neighbors that aren't entirely certain where the town line is, and it's actually laid out in the ground. So that might be a little bit more involved than one might think.
Yeah. At the end of the day, this process really should even up all the boundary. So you eliminate this question of where is this line? Where does the jurisdictional line go through the property, unless you buy it in the parcels?
I think it's more, it could be more complicated for us, because in many jurisdictions... I think it's more, it could be more complicated for us because in many jurisdictions you can use a tax map. And wherever the real estate tax is paid is sort of one of the evidences, is are you in this jurisdiction or that jurisdiction? Since the town of Washington receives no real estate taxes, tax parcel would easily be bisected by the county line because they're going to be paying to the county anyway. So I think that's where some of the confusion in the town of Washington arises. People know that they are in town and they can see on the map where their boundaries are, and yet somehow the town line is not necessarily exactly on their property line. And so some of that might get fixed.
Yes, that, that would be, that would be something that would be beneficial to everybody to clean up all of those split actions.
Like where the block kind of is across from the fire department?
When you get into properties potentially as high density, it becomes more of a negotiation because they go other ways.
I have a, there are people in the town whose property straddles the line. And they live, part, part of their parcels in the county, part of it is in the town.
Okay, maybe it doesn't, I mean, I think I took them up with a dozen.
More work than that. I mean, it, it's, I don't know how many, there's quite a few.
Other questions from Nancy?
So the fire department has approached the town?
Well, I don't, I don't want to say in a formal way, not a letter or something like that, but they have made clear to the president of the fire company and, and speaker who runs it, have both expressed interest that they would like to be brought, they want to have a wastewater system. It's, it would necessarily look to be at the town, it's built a wastewater system, but they would be happy to be brought into town if it may get access to wastewater system because they have a serious septic problem there. So that someone says, please take me in.
But none of the other property owners who would, who would be along the lines have approached the town?
Uh, I think that's accurate. So we don't know.
You know, being brought into town doesn't give you sewer rights though automatically either.
Correct. I mean, rural residential just remind everybody does not have access to wastewater.
It gives you sewer rights, it might not give you immediate access, but everyone in town, under the, under the contracts that were negotiated when the plant was put in, they have some standing such that if you extended sewer, as I understand it, if you extended sewer to somebody in rural residential, not to somebody else, that somebody else would have standing to say, now hold it in there, I have some rights here too. So they don't all.
But there is a phase two that's developed and that has specific properties kind of moving.
Just, just for the record, the town has the authority now to extend water anywhere that the property owner and the town could agree to lay a line, right? There's no restriction on that.
No, I think, I think past ordinance limiting this one.
I think the town has, but there's a state statute, lines can be extended without a boundary.
So the town could change that one.
Without a boundary.
But as I understand, the town is not at liberty because of pre-existing contract to offer sewer to anyone who's not in the town. Is that correct?
Um, right now, the, the town is not at liberty to offer sewer to anyone outside the sewer district.
Right, and that's been defined with.
That includes people in town.
Only in town, it's only a portion of town. And that, that's the sort of the moat around the sewer line and everything, it's a bright line.
Well, I ask that only because if someone should watch this and say, well, why doesn't the town just, it's so close, why doesn't the fire company just get a sewer attack? Because the town can't offer that, it's, it's not permissible because it's not in the sewer district.
It would involve a number of issues.
Well, typically, if you have a jurisdiction, you can get easements to the property owners and there's a way to do it legally. The problem is the town is restricted to who they can offer sewer to by pre-existing contract that says you've got to be in the sewer district, right?
Sewer district can be modified and.
Can it be modified beyond the existing town line?
Um, you know, that I'm not, I'm not sure of.
We're in the high grass now, but just sort of get that clear.
But there, there would be a clear governmental purpose in that because that fire company provides fire protection to the town.
And it'd also benefit the town to reach a more optimal level of use for the system.
And if something could be negotiated with property owners through which the line went as far as access to the line, so there's an equilibrium there, it'd work out.
Did I just follow, it's complicated, but theoretically we could extend the line to.
I'm not sure.
Fire company.
He wants to check some of the.
If, if certain conditions are that, that's another.
I'm not, I'm not sure if you can just extend this sewer without, without a, water you could, I'm not sure on the sewer.
This is a jump ahead, but at some point, if we were to go down this, this road, some kind of housing created, if you want to come, I don't want to tell for it, I want to figure out what your minds are. Another way, Patrick's question, does it become so expensive in some way to actually create, well, whatever, or some, is it really financially sensible to the town? But that's for another, let's, I shall say one more thing, if I, people often say, well, if we had more people hooked up the sewer, our finances would be a lot better. Let me remind you that, and I forget the average, but if the average wastewater fee for residents, let's say $50, let's say it's 50, someone's paying the town $600 a year. If you had 10 more people, it's only 6,000, you know, it's not, it's.
You need, you need larger users.
Yeah, or larger users or something, so it's not, it's not as people, oh, we just have a little more hookups that would make a.
And it's easier to run fire into those houses.
Isn't there, wouldn't any new user have to negotiate, but there'd be some fee for installation? My understanding was with each of those, you begin to pay down the.
Not the installation because, you know, insulation is, you're talking about the sewer assessment.
Right.
What they have to pay. A one-time fee of 7,000, well, now it's.
Well, it's 50, yeah.
Is helpful.
Well, 10,000.
That's what, I mean, there's some money there.
That is helpful.
However, in this situation.
Someone's also going to say, if I put up 10 whatever, I can't afford to pay 15 for each option that's negotiated, you know. Well, of course I'd be negative, it's just, I think sometimes people.
It's not a.
I don't understand the economic model, right? More do I understand the economic. Any, Nancy?
Well, first, you're talking about extending sewer to the, to the fire department, then you're jumping ahead to development. Well, if you jump ahead to development, you put in an awful lot more complication and therefore time, so you could end up spending 10 years.
It's complicated. If you look at the, it'll give you a headache every first few days, but for all of a sudden it says 10 years. I think I'm truly planning for the future.
It sounds like the Culpeper mine doesn't work complicated.
I just bring that up, but all these, the reason I bring that up is not to say it's going to take 10, 20 years, but to say that all the details.
Are important and need to be addressed.
We have a call, if you can bring in an extra, this is a historic, a historic area. So if it's a historic area, anybody that comes in would have to go under everything that we discussed with the historic area, correct?
No.
Because if that's not the case, then it wouldn't get out of control, you could have a sky rise thing over there or high rise here and there all around the town, which would take away from the historic value of the town and the quietness of the town. If somebody comes in and builds a 10-story thing over there, you know, if they come into the town, if you bring that situation into the town, then it should be under historic properties that we've, the comprehensive plan that we've gone over for years and years finally got straightened out, doesn't that apply to them also?
I think what the historic district does is it provides some limitations to prevent some of the excesses. And there are other means to maintain those same kind of limitations through different zoning of any new property that comes in. So there are a number of different tools that you can use besides putting a historic district overlay to accomplish the same thing, to ensure that there, to ensure that the beauty is maintained, the character is maintained, and that we're not ending it with high rises or lots of neon signs.
It's actually provision, enabling ordinance for historic districts that you have an entrance corridor to the historic district, say 211, old 211. That can be included under the auspices of the historic district to maintain an appropriate corridor to enter into the historic district.
So there's another tool that's available.
And it's typically.
So I think, the point is, I think while you're concerned, is a valid one, I think there are some tools to ensure that that does not happen.
Any other, well, it's been useful.
I just want, John, could you expand on that, about the corridor? You mean, if somebody, we could have a corridor from 211?
Yes.
Well, thought, the way, at the corner of 211, land on my neck left.
I mean, in town, if it's in the town.
Okay.
If it's in the town.
It has to be contiguous with the existing historical district as well, doesn't it? Isn't that certainly the implication is that it's a corridor two it must connect with?
You know, I, you know, it's been a while since I've looked at that statute, but how fine an edge you put on entrance corridor. I know of one that really doesn't touch, so. That would be an open question. But let me clarify one thing, that cost is installing sewer and services, but let's say you have a piece of property, you want to do something about, you know, housing, building housing, whatever. Typically, in that situation, property owner wants the sewer, pays for the extension of the sewer line to the property of the jurisdiction. The town paid for it in town here because it was extending it, the lines for the benefit of all the citizens within the sewer district existing.
Does your hint, Karen?
I hesitate to even add this, it's just a kind of throwaway, which is unfortunate this time. Given the thoroughness of this discussion, the elephant in the room really is vehicular access. Town and county have a fair amount of control over what's in the town, what's in the county, what gets developed in each place. But as far as putting in roads, ways to access any development, whatever it might be, then you bring in another party.
Yeah.
And the other party is VDOT.
Yeah, yeah.
And GDOT, with any, as Mr. Brown is educated, both anyone wanting to listen for years, VDOT has kind of a will of its own and some of the statutory determinations of where exactly their authority begins and ends is murky and sometimes on purpose. But I think that the other party that could end up being critical to any expansion through adjustments of the town's boundaries would be what kinds of lanes.
Yeah.
He didn't use the word road.
Yeah.
But lanes might be included, and if you get, do not involve that, then you have another party that has, has to be listened to, at least heard. So sewer, water, county, town, landowners, all are going to be players in this, but one of those that we hadn't mentioned yet tonight, very critical, could be VDOT.
Let me mention that to the extent that it's appropriate, you have a larger piece of property, but the agreement addresses in concept where future roadways will go.
Right.
Facilities.
Well, that would be part of any deal that we, I guess one might approve, but I mean, not that they were, but as, as we know, that also. Well, is it, anyone else have any other comments? I think it's very useful. In terms of next step, it strikes me that the fire company has expressed real interest in a frankly waiting for us to say something other than put a big, like, other people, property owners, it's more a question to an extent, are any of them really interested with it? So maybe worth actually talking to. My purpose is to be, to be, to be.
Would it be?
Open. This was, my purposes of doing this tonight is not only for us to learn about what's involved, but it's essentially saying that probably we're interested in ideas, clearly I have, we're interested in ideas, you know, people want to get in discussion, we're open to it. All right, next subject is Stubbs Street. Mr. Brown, I want to apologize to you. You've been sitting through all of this and we could have done you before the boundary adjustment discussion, and you may be sitting there thinking, I could be home now. The only thing that makes me feel a little bit better is we go down this road, someone's going to be hiring you. So it's probably helpful, it's a matter of education, but I, I do apologize.
It's been, it's been helpful hearing your comments, Mr. Brown. I, I probably have several discussions over the years with different property owners in and around the town of Washington, at different times talking about the idea of a boundary expansion.
Now a new subject.
Yeah.
All right, the second item, again, this is just for discussion, education, what, what do we need to think about? George Eatonman, who owns the home on Day Street, who owned the Diane Bruce, and Frederick Eagle, who owns the house on that corner, but more relative, the shed between George Eatonman's house and Lisa's shed, or shall we say a disrepair. And Lisa Lethwich, all three of these parties border in one way, and the, and the property bordered by the Hodges', all of them in one way or another border the Stubbs Street that is the end of the gang. That sub-street has not been used, maintained by the county, the town, VDOT or anybody since, who knows? It's effectively become maintained by the property owner, whether it's Diane Bruce or, or recently George Eatonman. So as the letter suggests, and I know you all got it today, and may not even have a chance to read it, they're looking, see if the town will consider turning down a sub-street over to them under various conditions, all to be discussed. And the town over the years has had experience with sub-street, of different sub-streets in one sort or another. Two is not a new subject, probably three or four that have been, one, two, probably three or four, whatever, been turned over at one point or another in the last, how we're going 50 years. John, do you want to, and Mr. Brown is not here. And Mr. Brown is not here to make a proposal tonight because this is premature, or we would have, like, sure, it was only in hand early, and then what happened. But, John, again, do you want to, I know you've been talking, but do you want to?
Yes.
Again, educate us on some of the issues that we would have to deal with in sort of process?
So, the, the application's been filed on behalf of the property owners under section fifteen point two dash two thousand and six, which is entitled Alteration of Vacation of Public Rights Away, Appeal from Decision. But what this section contemplates is that essentially a government abandons a right of way. And to do that, it can just receive evidence itself and make a decision. Or it can appoint three to five people to view the right of way and report in writing, I'll just read from the statute, any inconvenience that would result from discontinuing the right of way. And that's, that's where this, this application's been filed. There's another section, fifteen point two dash two thousand and eight, entitled Sale of Public Rights Away as Easements to Certain Purchasers. And upon an application of a landowner, joint landowner, in this case, the town may sell essentially the easement or the property for a fair market for my recent statute, fair market value, or its, or its contributory value to the abiding property owner. And the price can't be greater than, than those. Or, and then it says, or the amount agreed by the party. I think it's qualified by the first two, but the English ain't the best say that. So the English itself says that that could be higher, but it says, I won't get into all that. Let's just say it's fair market value or contributory value or less. So in that situation, although it doesn't specifically say it, but in that case, an appraisal may be of help to the council. And the expense of doing all this would fall back to the parties. Cost of advertising is, the application fee is limited by statute at least under two thousand and six to a hundred, a hundred dollars. But then it's clear that the other expenses have to be paid by the applicant, survey costs, the advertising costs for any public hearing, that sort of thing. So if the council wanted to take it up under two thousand and eight, it could be appraised. And once the council looks at that, the council could make a decision if it's interesting. And if so, before it moved on to the stage of a public hearing, there would really have to be a very specific final plan in place so the public could see exactly what's being considered, not generalities. And that would involve some more expense because at that point you'd have surveying and things to, to pay out. But at that point, it gains momentum, so let me just say that.
John, how would one appraise such a property?
Well, highway appraisers do it all the time. You do, do appraisals of this sort. And they're, they're a species unto themselves. You have to, you have to run them out. So, but they're familiar with the issue and how to do it. Or if you go back to this first section, it could be just abandoned period. But I'm not necessarily real certain about what the governmental purpose would be served by just abandoning.
Well, I see, is it relevant that the fact the town's abandoned that street? Or, it's not even a street. Essentially abandoned it for, Ray might know, I don't know, you know, thirty, forty, fifty years.
Yes, very, very long. That's one of those that shows that the town has no use. But this is the flip side of that, that the town has to analyze what could that be used for, given what's the land behind it. And things don't stay the same. The town will change over time. And over time, could that sub-street become important as a means of access to build roadways, lanes or whatever, into the properties behind it? And that's, that's really the bigger, bigger issue in this case. The first question is no present use, but in the other cases, it came before council, all the property was owned by one man behind it. So it was not that issue.
But if, if, if VDOT, let us say, declared that there's no way you could put a road, extend that road back there because if, if, because it would literally go down a hill and right into that house that's already built there, I'm not sure you could extend it, but it's not my place to make a judgment.
Yeah, I'm not saying when, that's just an issue, it has to, it should be evaluated, should be.
Can I ask a question?
You certainly may.
Thank you.
Of all people.
So shouldn't the Hodges be part of this? The property owner behind it that adjoins the very end of the street? Don't, don't they need to be part of this process?
That's, is that the one that was contemplated to be served by, by the easement?
Yeah.
Do they touch?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So they're not mentioned in this? I would say, shouldn't, shouldn't they?
They, they would get notice of the proceedings, so they could participate, but they don't have to be part of, have to be part of the application.
And that part being under contract?
If, the contract owners would have to get notice too.
I just, I just want to make sure that we don't over, forget they're part of it.
And the complicated, apparently they've sold the property to somebody else.
Yeah, that's what they have, it's under contract. But what is different than before? The way they situated that house, it can't, whether it be sub by, again, is under our current ordinances, you know? So.
Well, isn't there another house, back there, a property owner back there that needed this road, or that was only access?
Not now, not now, that only goes to the Hodges property, and they have access off the Hodges, the main street. And Lisa, George, she's a, died by.
For that, didn't that have somebody there?
Oh, you're talking about Lisa?
Lisa, yeah.
And she's included in this, and they said that they had granted her easement to her property.
She has, she has access to the back of it, on the first lot. And she's part of this.
Yeah, I just want.
Those three neighbors are all, they all want it to happen.
Okay, she's in, that's what I was just concerned about.
Let, let me say this, that if council went the two thousand and eight route of selling, getting appraisal, I don't think the appraisers are going to put a huge value on this thing at all.
They don't.
I don't think the appraisers are going to put a big value on this at all. But if it's something, and you sold it under the other section, what is the benefit to the government under two thousand and six section why? Why abandon it? What, what is the governmental purpose?
Well, generally we choose, I think we have to still see any purpose that we can think of.
Well.
Does VDOT have to take this, is this on their maps? Or does this have to be first taken off of their maps? Even though it's not.
That is a, a question that I bet you twenty-five county attorneys would like answered. Because the statute is that jurisdiction, towns under thirty-five hundred in population, VDOT is required to maintain the roadways. You don't have to have all the equipment and everything, but it does not say they own or control the right of ways, the roads. And typically within the town, the town controls the streets. Now, it will ask, for instance, in the case of Culpeper, it will give it to VDOT for an opinion. But it doesn't always follow VDOT's opinion or standard to you, so. So that's a question, but the position of the town of Washington is always taken, is the town owns and controls its streets. Although, courtesy of the county, they do involve VDOT.
It's a murky area.
Yeah, it's just. Like devil's advocate, because if someone down the road, those properties change hands, and then someone has an issue with something, and then they come back and say, oh, wait a minute, that's still on VDOT. Technically, it's on VDOT's inventory of streets. Because if VDOT, or whatever VDOT's predecessor was decades ago, built that street, even though they didn't maintain it, it's still theirs. Should they, should they have to officially?
We might, we might discover it's on their, on their books to take care of it.
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
We did down that road.
Right, and that's what I'm thinking, if they say, well, yes, the first twenty-six feet of it, or the first five feet of it, yes, but beyond that, no, it's not ours, I don't care what you have.
That, you know, the other case. The other case.
It's all a public comment. I can speak to that, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I actually.
We've actually already done the diligence and research on that. And it's not, this, this sub-street is not shown. It is not carried on any of VDOT's records, it's not shown on that at all. So that's, and, and I.
No, tested that.
The summary that we've been, it's already given you about the somewhat murky area, about how, you know, small towns, the interaction with small towns of VDOT made this.
Mike, you know, I guess you're irrelevant now, but I guess, oh, it's a question, anyway. And then do parties talk to the Hodges's, Hodges?
I don't know.
I don't, I don't announce the relevance.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know the answer. I don't represent the Hodges, they're, they're not part of this application. That's, that's correct. And I, and I agree, they would, of course, you know, they certainly need to have notice of the, of the proposed vacation and abandonment.
Is the original purpose of the sub-street, was it done? And in the sense of making the cul-de-sac, was it done as, in a sense that eventually the thought is someday that might be extended into a new street, into a new grid pattern?
I think, you know, Ray, the answer is we don't know.
Like Ray lives on one, was sub-street that became part of, was now your property?
That was the original intent of the sub-streets, where, that as the town grew, the road would continue out, like Gay Street would continue south across what is now Mary Ann's property.
Am I right in stating the following? That the following sub-streets over time have been given up, as it were? One is in front of Ray's house.
I think that, you know, we had a, a survey of the town streets when I was on council, which has been recorded. And I don't think the sub-streets were on the survey.
I don't think they were. Well, I'm, am I right in just saying, that in front of you was a stub, as it were? Jet Street going into the county property was a stubs. I think this is true, I'm going to ask it to your friend. A stub street that the town at some point gave over to the county. There is the stub street right where George lives, that was essentially given over to.
He's got one.
The yellow stub.
Yeah.
That was given over to.
The park, that's down on the back of.
Yeah, for Burg, Edenburg. And then there's this stub street adjacent to the post office. I don't know what's on this, but there's a.
Weren't there also alleys that had been vacated by the town over time? Some of the parcels, I know where we were, the bum partner now, was between Jimmy's rental, and there was a deeded town, or recorded town easement to, to alleys, it's divided property there for individualized. And over time, one went behind where the museum is. And the one that went, apparently that one was vacated when the state, I think in the thirties, changed Main Street, and you couldn't, the grade no longer allowed it, and that was a reason. Only reason I know that is because it became a board for our property, partway across the street, so it had some search.
That wasn't an original stub street.
It wasn't an original stub street, but there were, town had somehow rights of way to alleys that, that were vacated and went back to the original property or the current property owners. So there's been a history here of reallocation of rights of way that the town thought would help development, and then over time, development changed.
Well, there was a church back there at, at this Gay Street's, that is true.
That it served.
Yeah.
Now go back and see.
Any thoughts on the subject in general, or how we might proceed, or?
Give us tools.
I guess how people feel, I mean, it's.
Let me ask, is it their intention that we, is it their hopes that we just live in the street, or are they willing to pay for something for the street?
Well, the, John's right, there are two separate statutes, but I think it's fair that those statutes can be read together. We, we have filed the application under fifteen point two, two thousand and six, which just contemplates just a vacation and abandonment. It's, it's, I should point out that the applicant still is supposed to bear all the cost of, expense related to that, so the cost of, you know, the notice, the, the advertising costs. And if the, the town council wants to appoint the road dealers, which I haven't heard of being done since the nineteenth century, but it's still in the statute. All, all those costs are supposed to be passed on the property, so there's no out-of-pocket.
Per viewer.
That's what I said, fifty dollars per viewer.
That's right.
But the, if you look at two thousand and eight, it says that, I mean, I think it's very clear that when any local county has a condition to a vacation or abandonment, they require the purchase or sale of property. So it's fair for the town council to consider that. And that's certainly something that the property owners would be glad for the town council to entertain. It's, you know, it's, it's right there in the code. And if the thought was, well, let's get an appraiser to get in there and try and put a value on that, fair market value, that's a, that's a perfectly reasonable thing for the council.
Just a value, would they be willing to pay, would they be willing to accept?
Well, there's a market. Isn't that the definition, a fair market value?
That's a fair market, that's a, that's a market.
Would that still serve the, the two or three people that are there, even if you abandoned that or sold it to them? Would that still serve the, the three people or two people that are in that area?
Yeah, now, the, the purpose is to, to vacate the public right of way. And, and, and the, and the property lines, I mean, the street would go away, and the property lines would, would converge up to, presumptively up to the middle of the street on the ground.
Maybe it's more cuss, cussing.
And, and as we mentioned in the application, there, there certainly is the, there's already discussion with Ms. Lethwich about the idea of Ms. Eagle and Mr. Eatonman granting a private right of way that would basically extend along the same path where the, where the sub-street is now to serve the back part of her, of her lot, that's behind Ms. Eagle's structure on the corner seven.
One other possible effect of the abandonment of the structure when you're looking into Eaton on the left, is essentially property lines are right around this, the structure. So you can't really do anything with it because of setbacks. Whereas this would give it some room on one side to meet setbacks.
And it's fair, pointing, I've, I've had that discussion with people in the past. And, and, you know, the, the proximity of the property lines to that structure has always been a impediment, obviously, in doing anything with that. And, and that's definitely something that, that, you know, is in her mind, that, that, that helps fix the setback issue with that structure and gives a little extra space on that lot.
For grinder pot?
To, but I'm sorry?
For a grinder pot.
Well, they could.
There you go.
Grinder pot.
Kind of fifteen thousand dollars.
Sewer.
Well, just in a, a observation, I'm going, it strikes me that anything, if someone would either, that structure as it is now is just a detriment, it's on the trajectory, it's unsafe, it'll be fixed up or torn down. And there are issues on air, being carried out, so. But if there is a solution here that, if that's part of this, that meant that there was a. if that's part of this, that meant that there was a good use for that building, whatever good means, other than home for animals, you know, that would be something that would be valuable to town, in my case. How should we go?
For example, another question, and I don't want to extend this being longer than necessary, but maybe, John, you know the quick answer to this, but is there an ordinance or anything in town about a piece of property?
Demolition by neglect?
That's correct. There is a definition of what neglected.
There's also building code issues.
That, is that the issue in the ARB ordinance?
Yeah, the ARB has demolition by neglect.
Yeah, it's called a down.
But the issue of whether the town has the right to enforce it, to tell somebody what they got to do with the property, that's a job rather murky.
There's, there's some history on that structure and why it's the way it is.
Well, sometimes.
She came before the council because she wanted to build a studio. This is a woman who came to town once a year on the Fourth of July and lived in, and used her little cottage. And she wanted to build an artist's studio in that structure. But it had a full kitchen and bathroom. And the town rejected it. And I don't think she came back on the Fourth of July after that.
Right. And she's on a frequent visit. Well, how, John or anybody else thoughts on how we proceed on this? And I've got an application. People only, but I don't like that today, so let me.
Well, I think the fork in the road is, is the appraisal process makes sense to the council, but number one, does the council wish to move forward on it? And if so, second fork in the road is, does the appraisal process make more sense in this situation?
You're saying if it does?
Well, if the council wishes.
Well, let's go to the second question number one, which I can officially. Based on what knows, there was a general consensus, people sort of didn't like this idea, and it's not clear what one should spend much time on. If on the other hand, there's a consensus that people are open to it, let me.
Something to be considered. Something to be considered and decided in future time.
I think it's fair to consider. It's fair as soon as it.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
I think everyone thinks it's fair.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that point. So then, should we empower you and Mr. Brown to keep talking to each other?
Second fork, does the appraisal process make sense to the council? I think it makes sense to the applicant. It's a nominal value, I think, for what it's all over with. At that point, you know, no fingers can be pointed, the town discharged the studio for a fair market value.
Well, there's a lot to be said for someone paying something for it. I guess my question is, the appraisal that costing somebody, well, they'd have to pay for it.
But the town would be.
Appraisal costs more.
The town would have to, the town should consent to who the appraiser is.
Well, I think it would give us a lot more information for what this property's worth, if there were too much for this. And what I, I avoided the appraisal, I mean, I, I know Mr. Bennett's familiar, probably familiar with all the appraisers that do this kind of work in this area, and I've got a couple of mine as we're sitting here. So if, if it's satisfactory to the town council, I could go back to my clients and say, hey, let's propose, you know, this question of an appraiser, appraisal has come up, I can reach out to the couple that I can think of. And if they're able to do the work, if the council's comfortable with it, I'd be glad just to make those, make that suggestion to Mr. Bennett, and he could be empowered to.
They're ready for VDOT appraisers, approved, on their list.
Yeah, that's, well, there ain't enough of them. All in all, shall we move in that direction?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you want a motion?
Can we?
Can we, or can we really act on something like this right now, just because of the timing of this?
You just give guidance. You're not, you're not finding yourself, you're not making any decisions. You're just moving.
You just got information.
I think you could say, if a crowded highway, I mean, if people need to drive in to get to their access to their homes and stuff, just same property highway, and this, and no longer. Not area, they have to go through a process to get it out.
This doesn't have a.
I know they did that to a place up there.
All right, anything else from that?
Done? It's kind of big. So then, you have the property owners come back to us next meeting?
Right, just carry it over to the next meeting.
Not everything could maybe be done by then, but.
No, no.
And, you know, in my mind, it would be important part that people that need access sign off and agree on those too. So, as long as they're reasonable.
All right.
Which everybody is important.
Let me open, I'm worried about these things. Let me open the public forum, just question, any subject? Mike, again, I'm sorry, we should have had you come up. I wasn't thinking twice. Nancy?
I mean, no criticism because the discussions you have are often thorough and interesting, but process does take a long, a long time. We still haven't gotten to be in the ordinance, and that's been six months. If, if you're going to proceed with adding the fire department to the sewer system, try to make some progress on it. Otherwise, I think it, it will hang, you know, hang out.
On the fire department.
The fire department on the sewer system. Try to make some progress on that, otherwise it will go on for a long, long time and they'll be without access to. Fire home is so well-used.
Anything else I need to leave us? Don't we go ahead? Anything personal? Yes, to some extent. There are, let me be careful here. The last time I talked to Rick Hancock, which was apparent approximately two to three weeks ago, there were three candidates for the postal. One being here in town in Dr. Martin's office building. Second being on land that Jimmy DeBurg owns, adjacent to the bank, where Mr. DeBurg would build a facility for them. And the third was on property that Jay Miller, is it Jay? On two eleven, where he has space that is a bunch of public storage behind him. I mean, I want to be careful here, whether he is still trying to do it on that. It's a little like, um, Butch Sendell has been representing Dr. Martin. Butch and I have been in very close contact on this whole subject. It is a, I think, terrific solution. Not that it's, I'm okay with it, so. The post office will be sending, they've now asked for a lot of information. They take a long time. The guy said it would take a long time? It takes a long time. They've now asked for a lot of information from Butch and I'm sure from Jimmy. They are sending a team of people up here sometime, I was originally told this month, but I wouldn't count on it, you know, maybe early July, to actually look at the practical aspects of it. So it's, that's where it stands. There are not, as you can tell from what I said, there are not too many people looking to have a post office, what one might have thought more. We've got a really good location with, you think adequate parking, accessibility to trucks, space, everything. So we'll see. And if it competes, as it were, with Jimmy DeBurg, his option would be building then something new adjacent to the bank, where I can't help it. I think the observation would be about the most southern part of the two-two-seven-four-seven zip code, and would be further away from where most people live in the two-two-seven-four-seven, and a location here would be a lot closer. Just an observation, a factual observation. It can be done with a whole question, we'd like to keep it in the town, for all the obvious reasons. And Hancock is fully aware of that. His process is, he and his operations team will lay out the alternatives. He will have some influence over what the final choice is. The final choice, he keeps telling, will be made by people probably in Washington DC that worry about such things, and for reasons that aren't totally clear to me, this issue is considered to be of some significance to the postal department way beyond our size. As usual, the town of Washington is fighting above its weight without my sense. And we have progressed from being originally told that, but it's clear that what we're hearing is a decision to be made by people other than Hancock, who have some influence.
Does that mean a decision that has been made either by a current owner or by the postal people, that the current location will not be in the running for the new post office?
As far as I know. So I'm reasonably cautious about this. Anything else? If not, close the public forum, and there is no fun session tonight. And I make the motion adjourned. All right, we have a.
I'd be there.
All fair. Everybody, thank you. That was a good discussion.